Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, December 18, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti is absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Y?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, before we get started, I would like to take a moment to introduce our new city attorney, Matt Roby. Matt's a Watertown native. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in business administration with accounting and economics as a focus, and a Juris Doctorate from the University of St. Thomas School of Law in Minneapolis. He previously worked in the South Dakota Attorney General's Office and held a private practice here in Watertown, and we are thrilled to have Matt joining us. And also, I need to thank Judge Vince Foley for stepping in to be the acting city attorney for the last four months. His expertise and experience made him a huge help for me and a real benefit for the city, and he's going to continue to assist us in a few matters that he's been involved with and help the transition for Matt, so. With that, I'll move right into looking for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion in second? Moved by Bueller?
Second.
Second by Lalum. Any discussion?
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from one, E, F, and H. I'm the city representative on the first district board of directors, so I'm recusing myself from those three items.
Noted. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda, and I would like to move items seven and eight to the top so that we have some people in the audience that can get on their way. Is there a motion in second?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Bueller, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. All right, item number seven. Application for a new retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for Scrappy Inc., doing business as Woody's Sports Bar and Casino, 1612 Ninth Avenue Southwest. Is there a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Solom, second by Bueller. And I will open the public hearing and let Kristen give a little introduction.
These are applications for the Sunday liquor. You can't, it looks a little different because you'll see the application then right after is a renewal. The application is to cover 2017, and then the renewal would have been done previously in the November, but being as these were applied for later, the renewal would then be for 2018. So just so everybody's aware of kind of the steps.
Kristen, I'm assuming that the renewal's a little bit less expensive than the original application. I know it's the dollar, the application fee wasn't quite the same on the application versus the renewal.
Let me see. It is the $240. And yeah, actually, they are the same. The only difference is for an application, you have to have a public hearing, and that is, the $40 covers the notice of public hearing. So that's the publication fee, so otherwise, it's the $200. Okay?
Good question. Any others?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd have to recuse myself from items three through eight.
Okay.
Monday night, what you show for?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this one? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and look for council action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number eight is the renewal of a retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for Scrappy Inc., doing business as Woody's Sports Bar and Casino, 1612 Ninth Avenue Southwest. Is there a motion in second?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Vilhauer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number three. Application for a new retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for Number One Casino Inc., doing business as Number One Casino, 1006 Fourteenth Street Southeast. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Albertson, second by Lalum. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four. Renewal of a retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for Number One Casino Inc., doing business as Number One Casino, 1006 Fourteenth Street Southeast. Motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Y, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number five. Application for a new retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for BMG Inc., doing business as Johnny Ringo's, 520 Tenth Street Northwest. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Vilhauer.
Second.
Second by Y. And I would like to open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak about this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six. Renewal of a retail on-sale Sunday liquor license for BMG Inc., doing business as Johnny Ringo's, 520 Tenth Street Northwest. Motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Bueller, second by Danforth. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. All right. Item number nine. 2017 budget supplements. And A is ordinance number 17-46 supplemental appropriations for 2017. Kristen?
Okay, this is the second reading of the budget supplement. It's kind of done each year. We go through, we look at the budgets that you guys approved to start 2017. A lot of these things you've probably seen throughout the year, so you kind of knew they were coming at this point. If there's any specific questions you have, I can answer them versus probably going through every line item, so I'll take any questions.
They're the same as the first reading? Nothing's changed?
Yep. The only change was at the first reading, I talked about the $27,000 change, which is now on the ordinance. So what is attached to the agenda is the supplement. Yep.
Kristen, just in general, without any specific ones, is there anything here that would cause us to need to revise our 2018 budget, or will we just do that after the fact a year from now?
Probably the one that we are all aware of is the, what utilities came to us with, was with the water at the new Premier Softball. Probably for 18, we're a little under budget. I think until we have a full grasp of that, now we kind of know. It was kind of a tough first year because how much were we watering just to get grass growing and all that? So I think our plan is between Jay and I, we'll probably watch the water in the spring and probably come to you guys midsummer to let you know what we're seeing, but there again, that would be adjusted at the end of 18.
I would ask the question, was it, most of these items, they look fine, but is there anything that was controversial when we had last time these came around? Anything of note?
Not really. Probably the biggest one that stands out is the Wellness Center. Some of those items are just the simple fact that I don't think we knew quite. If you look electricity, I think we spent lots of time trying to see what the budget would be, talked to different facilities, but until we had a grasp of the facility, it was a little difficult. So that's probably the biggest change from previous times we've done this, is just the budget for that facility. You know, you can even see the insurance on it was a little under budgeted. So other than that, most of it, even in the fire department, they have a huge one for the machinery and equipment. Now, that was all items that you guys had approved them going out and buying through grants, so they have grant money coming in for that. But they weren't budgeted, but they had council approval prior, so.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Vilhauer, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 10. First reading of ordinance number 17-47 amending district boundaries by rezoning syndicate addition from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Albertson, second by Bueller. Shane, would you like to?
That was a first.
Bring the map up and tell us about this?
Sure. Can you put my script up? Thank you, Mayor. We received a petition from Roy and Carrie Brownlee and Marilyn Lobins, Lobins, I apologize on the pronunciation, of Northview Properties LLC. The reasoning for the rezone is that both of the properties known as 913 Fourth Street Northeast and 315 Ninth Avenue Northeast, they both front Highway 81 or Fourth Street Northeast. They have a fourplex on them, and that use is not conforming with the R1 zoning. If they were to refinance or attempt to get building permits, et cetera, then their use wouldn't be in conformance and would make those applications problematic. So along the Highway 81 corridor, a rezone to an R3 or something of that nature is a little bit more of a buffer from an R1, so we don't have any issues with the rezone from that standpoint. I would like to point out that there are still some non-conforming issues with each of the properties. The property at 315 Ninth Avenue does have some issues with a setback on the front yard. It's supposed to be a little bit more than the 21 feet that's there, it's supposed to be 30. And the side yard setback is a little short on the side yard as well. And then on the other property, 913 Fourth Street Northeast, that also has a front yard setback issue. Now, what that means is that if we rezone the use, we're going to make a legal non-conforming lot rather than a inappropriate non-conforming lot. So we're still okay with that. It just means if they build something, or if one of them burned down, they maybe have to relocate the building slightly to become, meet the setbacks, so. Anyway, it's an improvement to the situation that we currently have, and I know this is a first reading, so there's no action, but leave it at that, and next time, we'll make a recommendation to approve, so thank you.
Okay.
I did just want to note, too, with that being a first reading, there will be no motion in second.
Forget those motions. Item number 11. Resolution establishing fees for city licenses, permits, administration, and other miscellaneous items. Resolution number 17-38. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Danforth, second by Lalum.
Yep.
And Kristen, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Yep. This is another item that is done each year. I sent this out to all the department heads and had them review the fees that we're currently charging, see if there's any that should be added, any that should be changed type of things. Only had a couple actual changes to the resolution. Under the general, there's a, we added the audio or video recordings and files on CDs. We had a couple departments that said they've had requests to put information on a CD and looked at what, I think the police department already was charging, something similar to that. So we did add that as one of the fees for the city. And then the only other change was in the engineering. They have kind of a really specific printer, a copier up there, so we did add the charge for the photocopy print charge of the $3.50 a square foot. So other than that, these are all pretty much the same. We did notate on a couple of them. Sales tax was included, and it wasn't real clear, so we did that both for city staff and for the public, so everybody's aware of how the fees are charged.
Kristen, is this an increase in fees, or are we just trying to clarify what our fees are?
We do this each year, and it's just a review process to make sure, are we charging enough? Have we captured everything that we should be? I also know that building services, a couple items aren't done anymore, so those were removed. It's just a time for us to take a look at our fees. This is kind of part of that, too, where when we do our budget with our revenues, it helps us here, too, so.
Kristen, I know it's not necessarily apples to apples, but do we do any kind of comparison with other, you know, cities out there as far as what their fees are for some of the similar services?
As far as I know, we don't. I guess, like I said, at this point, I just ask the departments to review it. It's something that we can look into. It would be, pretty much all cities do a resolution that states their fees, so we could take the time in 18 here and...
Couldn't hurt.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 12. Renew airport liability insurance policy for 2018 and authorization to pay the premium. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum?
Second.
Second by Albertson? Any discussion? Kristen, you want to tell us what this is?
Yep. This is done each year. It comes right at the end of the year for the beginning of the year. It's a little bit separate than any of our other insurance. Same coverage and the same premium as last year, so.
Sounds like a deal.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Kristen, with all the extra activity going out there at the airport, I know it's liability coverage, it's got a pretty broader high amount, but is there any look, do we need to consider increasing because of all the extra things going on out there compared to years past?
No, I did speak, I did speak with our carrier, and we kind of went over everything, and at this point, no. This would be what we need. This is actually reviewed kind of on a three-year basis, so as long as there's nothing really significant, it stays at what it is. Now, we're coming to the point where after this year, we'll do another kind of thorough review.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 13. Approval for transfer of 8.15 acres of land from the street department and stormwater department to Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department for a tree nursery as recommended by the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Board. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Bueller, second by Vilhauer. Jay, do you want to tell us about this at all?
During the 2017 budget process, when we were holding the public hearings, the council, we were in a discussion about a potential tree nursery, and the council at that time awarded $20,000 to find and establish a tree nursery here in Watertown. Well, during the course of the summer, we've looked at many different areas throughout the city, and every one of them seemed to have some pitfall one way or another, and came across this area in a discussion with Mike Berger, and you know, this really looks like an area that has a great deal of potential. It's in a pretty good location. We're going to have staffing close by with the Premier Softball Complex and the Anza Complex. It's flat, we're at a good water source there, and you know, we're going to have, it's towards the southeast corner of the city, but we are going to have good access with roads around the south bypass to get to all the various parks, city park, golf course locations, so just really excited about this location, and I think it's going to work out really well. We have about, there's 8.15 acres there, and I would say we would have three and a half to four and a half acres that we could use for a tree nursery, which would give us ample, ample space to grow trees.
Yes.
Which square is it? Which one is it?
It's the, no, the center one up, that one.
Okay, yeah.
There's a drainage ditch on the north side there where you see the trailers extending into the city property a little bit there, but that upper level is going to be really nice for us, I think. And you know, like Mike Berger says, should be able to find water within eight feet, so if we could put a well into there, we'd have a good irrigation source, and I think it would be good to go. And if we can, you know, carry over some of that funding that was awarded in 2017, we could use that for the irrigation and probably some of the initial tree plantings, so.
Are we getting rent on that property?
I don't think so.
Councilman Lalum?
Jay, what kind of trees are we looking at putting on there? And then I have another question after that.
You know, that could be a lot of, you know, both boulevard and park trees, you know, that could range from maples to, oh, probably some of the aspen types, probably not too many conifers. You know, we use a lot of the lindens now, probably some of the disease-resistant elms, that type of thing.
Okay. My second question is, are we looking at putting a service road through there, like a gravel-type road, or are we just going to be driving across the grass?
Probably just driving across the grass. I don't really see, you know, as long as we can get in there for, right now, the street department has been mowing that area, and you know, we would go in and probably do some tilling. You know, I don't know if we're going to do belt plantings or pod-type plantings, that will have to be determined, but I would say we would just keep it grass, and we can get in there and do the mowing and watering, and then in the future, the translocation of the trees out of there, so.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Jay, you've probably answered the question by reference to Mike a couple times, but wastewater, I mean, they're not looking at needing this land in the future, that they're okay giving it up for this purpose?
They're very much okay. In fact, Mike is the one that kind of introduced it to me, so.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14. Consideration of change order number two final with Timmons Construction, Inc., for 29th Street Southeast Reconstruction Project number 1703, increasing the contract by $28,306.86 for a final amount of $576,466.01. There a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Roby, second by Vilhauer. Shane, you want to tell us about this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The majority of this extra cost was due to the fact that we made some estimates on how much gravel we thought we could salvage out from underneath the existing pavement, and we weren't as successful as we had anticipated, and so if you look at item nine above, you can see there's a deduct of $15,000, but then if you look at item 1B at the bottom, to replace it with new gravel is $33,400 and some dollars. So that's the major factor, and the extra cost here is something that we didn't have a lot of control in the end over. We were anticipating that the base was put in consistent with the previous plans, and that's not what we found in some areas. So that's the primary major swing on this $28,000 is that increase in that bid item. And for the most part, the rest of them are pretty garden variety pluses and minuses, and I'll just make a quick comment that we are, you know, the original bid was $530,000, and we added some cost value type items to this. In other words, we increased the thickness in some turning movement areas so that we would offset future problems with, you know, panel replacements and stuff where all the heavy turning movements are done and so forth. So we took the low bid, which was a great value, and just added a little bit more value to the project, and we're very happy at $576,000 for the project that we've got done out there. And we do have a little bit of maintenance warranty work to finish in the spring, but, so we're going to hold the contract open until spring. I'm going to be issuing a payment here at the end of the month and reduce the retainage to two and a half percent from the normal 5 percent, so it's still more than enough to cover the work that would be done if they walked away from it. But good contractor, good project, and I recommend approval of this change order.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 15. Consideration of change order number one final with Highway Improvement, Inc., for 2017 Asphalt Concrete Maintenance Work, Schedule C, Crack Sealing Project number 1714, increasing the contract by $16,690 for a final amount of $230,690. There a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Solom, second by Lalum. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. The city had some crack sealant material on hand from a previous purchase, and so Rob recognized that as a value, that he had extra crack sealing that could be done in the city, so we provided the material and asked for a price from the contractor to install that material. So we added, I don't know how many blocks of extra work it was, but quite a substantial increase in the blocks that we were able to successfully crack seal, and this change order in the amount of $16,690 is primarily from the additional crack sealant that was installed, so Rob might be able to answer any other questions.
Anyone have any questions? Councilman Lalum?
Rob, how many additional blocks did we end up taking care of this year?
Actually, today I did do some quick calculations, and we had 272 blocks total that we got done this year with those dollars. Come out to about $800 a block, but I didn't calculate what we had with the additional. I think it was 14, what was it, 14.2, I think? Or no, 13.140 was, yeah, $13,140 was what we did there, but I'd have to go back and check that. I did not check that part, so. But it was the actual, at $1.42 a pound, they actually gave us a reduction of .42 cents of a pound for our material, so. And our material was purchased before I went to the street department, so we're thinking nine, eight, nine years ago.
Has that put us ahead then for next year then?
Yeah, well, I'd like to do another large crack sealing project next year, maybe not quite as big, but we're working on that after the first of the year to figure out what areas we'll be doing for next year, so. It did definitely help us catch up, so.
Thanks, Rob.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Item number 16. Consideration of change order number one final with Big O Concrete LLC for Uptown Alley Reconstruction Project number 1707, decreasing the contract by $3,303.90 for a final amount of $144,710.60. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Danforth, second by Bueller. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. As this change order or recommendation is, it is a deduct of $3,300 roughly, and I do want to point out one thing. There was a couple of small bills that we paid for some assistance with some of the driveways and stuff in the, along the edge of the alley that we couldn't quite cut off and participated because of the way that driveways are cracked. participated because of the way that driveways are cracked, it's, you can't cut a clean edge, you know, those kind of things. So we did participate in a twelve, about twelve hundred dollars of work that, most of it was done by the private individuals, and the city just paid for their share of getting that matching back in. So I just wanted to be clear on that, that there is a couple other bills that we did participate in. But overall, the project was very successful. We did a T alley and another block south of that T alley this year. So we, we did a lot of work with a, with a reasonable amount of money, you know, one hundred and forty-four thousand to get basically three lengths of a alley done. So we're continuing on that project. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? See none? I'll ask for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The last change order, item number seventeen, consideration of change order number one with J&amp;J Earthworks, Inc. for Miscellaneous Storm and Street Improvements Project Number Seventeen Eighteen, increasing the contract by eight thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars, fifteen cents, for a revised contract amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Danforth. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this project, or this change order, we're not calling it a final because the project isn't gonna get closed out this fall or winter. We do have some seeding and some minor work that are carrying over into next season, but this does get us set with what quantities we did agree with on the contractor for payment. This way, we can kinda give him a final payment for the year and get him paid for all the work that he did do. Primarily the eight thousand dollars, some of that is additional seeding and mulching. Another one is a four inch concrete walk is a little bit, we did a little extra work there, and some base course. The base course on Fifteenth Street, we found to be um, you know, lacking. It was only about six inches of base, and we wanted to have nine or more, so we, as long as we were there and we had the pavement exposed, we added some base to that roadway to make it stronger. So we were very prudent on the additional value that we added to this project as well.
All right. Any questions? Councilman Albertson?
Shane, I have a question. Do you go out and actually supervise the building of these, or do your, does your department, or does somebody, how did you know that we had six, but you wanted nine? I mean, I don't know how you knew that, but how'd you know it wasn't happening?
Well, we, in this project, it is our staff, city staff, that does the inspection work. And we were fortunate in that when we replaced the stormwater pipe on the, along Fourteenth Avenue, that crossing, we were able to identify that the gravel seemed a little bit short. So what we did, as long as we had all the pavement torn, torn off, we kinda scratched around in a few places elsewhere in the intersection and found that, that deficiency, and then made a quick decision, as long as we had everything ready to, to beef it up a little bit for, you know, it's the right time to do it, it's when you have it open and ready to go. So we made sure that that section was a little stronger when we finished it.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Shane. Item number eighteen is authorization for the mayor to sign on a contract for professional services with Foley and Foley Law Office, PC for the following: A, representation in the matters of the area bounded by Highway Two Twelve on the south, Willow Creek Drive on the east and north, and by Nineteenth Should Be Street on the west; B, representation in the negotiations with the Watertown Boys and Girls Club; and C, representation on other projects as assigned. And these are items that Vince Foley was working on as the acting city attorney, and we had a contract for those, which stated a rate, and for additional items being a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And this contract acknowledges that previous contract, and says if there's any different rates, they'd be identified, and they're not identified. So different rates may be applied to different matters, but such rates shall be identified on the exhibit A. And I handed out an exhibit, or Kristen handed out exhibit A, which just identifies the projects, and the same rate from the previous contract of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So I'd look for a motion and a second for approval?
Second.
Moved by Vilhauer, second by Lalum. There any questions or discussion?
Mayor, I do have a question. So, other than the items, the last one that says what C is it, on other projects as assigned, is there a duration that this contract goes for? Is this an open-ended thing from your standpoint and from Matt's standpoint of what is needed? So does this go on perpetually, or?
Until those issues are resolved.
But the last one doesn't identify an issue. It says other-
Well, right, we would, if we, you know, identified another issue, we would, we could assign it and use the same contract for that purpose if the council wanted to. So if something came up.
Is it open-ended then? Is that what, it is an open-ended deal? Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nineteen is consideration of bids for supply of petroleum products and street maintenance materials, project number seventeen thirteen. Is there a motion in second for approval?
Second.
Moved by Bueller, second by Danforth. Is there any, quite well, I'll let Shane tell us about it a little first.
Thank you, Mayor. On December seventh, we took bids for the, those various items on this project. It, it covers a lot of, of topics. I'll, I'm gonna read the recommendation, and then I'll go into the more detail. So council action request is a motion to award contracts as followed: hot mix and cold mix asphalt to Dunick Incorporated, pit run, crushed rock, crushed concrete, rock chips, pea gravel and dirt to Dunick Incorporated, de-icing sand to low backhoe, gasoline diesel fuel and fuel oil to Sioux Valley Co-op, salt to black strap Inc., cutting edges to RDO Equipment, manhole frames and covers to Millbank Wind Water, and joint sealant to Beerspock Equipment and Supply Inc. Looking at the bid tab, the things I'll point out that led to those decisions, once again, Dunick Incorporated was the only one to bid on the asphalt products. We did not get a bid on the emulsified asphalt, you know, the tack that would be used for seal coat, and that's not uncommon. We haven't bought that material for probably a decade or longer, so the people have quit bidding on that. The pit run, rock chips, pea gravel has happened exactly the way it has the last couple of years with low backhoe being the low bidder on the de-icing sand. All other bids have been supplied by Dunick Brothers, or formerly McLaughlin and Schultz. Once again, the only fuel bid that we got was from Sioux Valley Cooperative, and they offered the same deduct this year as the last couple of years. And Black Strap was the only bidder on the salt and calcium chloride. The, the plow cutting edges, item of note was that Diesel Machinery Incorporated had the low bid, but they didn't submit a bid security, so we disqualified them and awarded RDO Equipment Company. On the manhole frames and covers, due to the way we've bid that over the last few years, it, it gets kinda convoluted in how to successfully determine all the low bidders, but Millbank Wind Water was the most consistently low bidder in that category, so we're recommending award to them. On the joint sealant, Brock White Company was the low bidder, but again, failed to submit the required bid security, so they were disqualified, and we're recommending award to Beerspock Equipment and Supply. So with that, any questions? I'll try to answer.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Shane, or I guess I, Rob, I directed this question to you, and Mayor, you and I, this brief conversation last week as well. On the fuel, on the fuel and gas bid, I attended the Glacial Lakes Energy Annual Meeting, a shareholder meeting a couple weeks ago, and it was mentioned there that, pointed out that all the county gas, gas engines or vehicles is burning E thirty, and I realize there's only limited supply of places where E thirty is available, but, but is that something that is considered or can be considered in the future? Because, you know, the big price difference between regular and, and E thirty, and it runs in virtually all, all gas engines, my understanding, I mean, is that a consideration in the future?
It is kind of an oversight. This is the first year that E thirty's been a mainstay product to even award. I don't think it was even an ongoing product last year at this time. So my intention is, if you would award the contract to Sioux Valley Cooperative, what I would do is write them a letter and, and reach out to them to see if they would honor a six cent deduct on the E thirty as well to, to this contract. So, and the police department did talk to me about that, and no matter what, we'll add E thirty to the line items for the subsequent year. But again, it was, it was kinda something that we didn't, didn't think about. That was a new product that's on, available now.
Good thought, though. Rob, did you wanna say something?
Well, I was just gonna add that we'd have no problem running E thirty in our, our stuff. I personally run E thirty, and I haven't had any problems with my old vehicles or my newer vehicles, so it's a savings for the city, and I really personally don't see why we won't run that throughout our city fleet, so. Just my two cents.
Yeah, appreciate that. Anyone else? Yeah, look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number twenty is discussion of US Highway Two Twelve intersections at Eleventh Street East, Fourteenth Street East, and Seventeenth Street East, and recommendation of response to SD DOT. And Shane, I'm gonna ask for your help on this. I think you've got drawings of what these projects are in eighteen oh two, and there's also in that file, I don't have a computer here, so I can't bring it up, but I believe in that file, there's also a letter from the DOT, which is triggering this. Essentially, the Highway Two Twelve project, reconstruction project is coming in the near future, and we anticipate work done in these intersections, this would be the time to do something different than exists today, and we've expressed that desire to the DOT, and they've asked the city to commit to whether or not we're actually planning to do these projects by the end of this year. So I'm looking for council support of what we would tell the DOT. So the three locations, this is the first one, this is Eleventh Street East and Highway Two Twelve, and Eleventh Street does not go to the south of Highway Two Twelve. So this would be a brand-new intersection if it were a public road, or it could be a driveway point for, a driveway for the adjacent business, which is Montgomery Furniture. And their driveway currently is right in and right out only, or is it?
Right, right in.
In only. They can't even, aren't supposed to use it for out. It's just not a safe location for an, a driveway. So moving the driveway over to be a cross from Eleventh Street would be a wise thing to do from a safety perspective, might do more further circulation as well. I'm just wondering what the sense of the council is, if, if you wouldn't mind expressing how you feel about the city paying for improvements to a road intersection at that location. Or, and we could just look at it as a driveway location when they do a curb cut. Councilman Roby?
Thank you. Just to add to that description, part of what the DOT wants to do is, is they're talking about traffic studies at those three locations, and that will help dictate what we wanna do, or could help dictate what we do, you know, either a driveway or all the way through, or nothing. And that goes for all three of those locations. So my question is, really what we're talking about is, given the DOT, the concurrence that we wanna move ahead with looking at these via traffic studies, how much would a traffic study cost? I, I don't have a good feel for that.
I'm thinking probably it would be twenty-five thousand dollars for a, I, I really, I'm guessing, but that's the ballpark, I'm thinking for-
That'd probably be for all three, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I mean, if we did just one of them, it wouldn't probably be a third of the guys.
Yeah, we're mobilized, let's take advantage of that. We're, that project comes through in two thousand twenty-one. But the result of those traffic studies might be, we do make some changes or adaptations at those intersections, that's gonna be at city expense, but we will be able to draw upon their engineering, and I think that's valuable.
Absolutely. Councilman Lalum?
Are we looking to remove that building that's up there? Would we have to do that through condemnation, or is that up to us to figure that out?
You see, that's, that's part of the whole issue here, is that's all private property. We don't have right-of-way there for a road. There's a lot of work that would have to be done, and numerous property owners. So it, we always thought that would be, you know, if you're gonna do an intersection there, the time to do it is when they're reconstructing Highway Two Twelve. But chances are, those issues might not be resolved. But I think it would be worthwhile to at least study it with a, to see the traffic circulation. If, if you're not opposed to that, we would move forward with it from that standpoint. Not making a commitment to actually build an intersection there, but at least to study it. Councilman Albertson?
Can we do a curb cut without the permission of the owners?
No. We, no, the, the DOT owns that. The, the DOT has control over where those curb cuts go. They may have an agreement with the property owner for where the existing curb cut is, but they don't have any other agreements for where there isn't currently a curb cut. That would be entirely up to the DOT.
And I would like to add a comment to that. I think, if I recall, and this happened, of course, before I came here, but I believe the DOT worked with Montgomery's on, when they modified this driveway as a right-in, they actually were in the process and eliminated a driveway over here at, at, along the Eleventh Street intersection which went to this building. I believe that's all tall curb there, and no driveway exists currently. So they'd have to renegotiate a driveway there.
Right. And that's a safer location, though, than the other one. It would probably mean closing one to open another. We wouldn't have two. Councilman Lalum?
These photos that you're putting up there, is that their recommendation for where the road would go?
No, no, we drew those, just as an, an illustration of what we-
These are a concept based on what the owner of Montgomery's would like to see happen.
Councilman Danforth?
Well, I gotta make a comment, and I got a question. Question first, if it was a, an access point for, not a road, but an access in, would there, would that be lighted going out?
There is a signal there, is that even-
It would be a part of the signal, then. It would change what they're today, and it would be signaled on the exit side of things.
The DOT needs to know, because they're designing it now.
From a road standpoint, based on what we know today, and we had this discussion the other day, Mayor, is that I don't see the value of the city putting a road in with what we have today. I really don't. I know it's been talked about, and quite honestly, for a long time, I just haven't seen the value of that road. Now, that could change, obviously, with either development back there, it could change with, you know, the, the notion that what's being thrown around right now in regards to ice at the, at the mall. I mean, that could change that in the future, but today, what we know, it'd be hard for me to justify spending those kinds of dollars, buying right-of-way, doing everything, and putting that in at this location. If the, if the, if the landowners wanted to do that for their own access and for further development, I would be more than happy with that.
Anyone else? Councilman Roby?
Just, I, I would tend to agree with Mike-
I would tend to agree with Mike on that. My anticipation would be that wouldn't justify it. But I think the question before us is, do we want to tell the state, yeah, we want to do a traffic study that affect those three spots? And then take those results and then have our input on to what they eventually do with 212. And I think, I, I don't think they would put the road there. But as long as we're doing the other two spots for a traffic study, I'd say we'd probably do it and validate that. But the other point you brought up does a good one, is that, that's a wild card at the mall, too.
I have the other drawings up if we want to have any discussion on those as well.
Councilman Vilhauer?
I guess I've got a question general. We're being asked to respond to some correspondence from the state DOT. I mean, I haven't seen the correspondence. I'm not sure what exactly they're asking from us.
It's in that file. If you could bring that up, there's an email in there so you can actually read. It's short, what they're asking us to, zoom it way up. Not quite big enough for me to read.
It's yelling at me on my screen.
We, sorry, we're far away. For the requested changes along the corridor, we would look to the city to provide the traffic impact study, traffic operations analysis. The DOT would like to be involved and help provide data and review where appropriate in order to ensure adequate future operations of the facility, but cannot commit to the analysis. So, this is what they're asking, is will we commit to the analysis? And, and I think it's, it's premature for us to decide if we want to do these projects or not without the analysis. So, I think, in, in my opinion, we should move forward, at least with the analysis. And Shane, if you could bring up at least the pictures of those other ones, I guess that's what I'm asking you, is would you support that response to the DOT that we'd like to move forward? You're gonna have to zoom in on that, Shane. It's hard to see.
Okay, this is a, a concept drawing of the intersection of 14th Street. This is Larson's electric building. Hy-Vee and the bank are down here in the southwest corner of the picture. Hy-Vee Liquor up, up here. This is kind of a concept on how we would bend the, or we, the screen line would be a new right-of-way. This portion of the roadway that exists there today would be demolished. And the new alignment would be something like the yellow that's drawn here. Some advantages I see is 14th Street really is the last piece of roadway that goes all the way north to First Avenue North from Highway 212 until you get way over to 19th Street. And there's a big gap. I mean, there's no crossover traffic at all. So, this would be an ideal location to enhance that traffic pattern. 13th Street, which is where the light is now, quite honestly, is a, an old street, narrow. It's not very conducive to traffic.
Would you bring, I'm sorry, Madam?
It's not a thoroughfare and the south is a private driveway.
Yeah, pull up 13th and look at the north side of the intersection. You basically have another intersection right after the intersection, and it's not even curb and gutter there. So, that's, to have a light there, it's, it's really kind of messed up.
Yeah. And to be honest, the DOT is looking at options on what to do with this intersection. They haven't come forward with any, anything concrete yet. But I think they're looking at the appropriateness of these little end streets.
The 14th Street where we're looking at a more appropriate location for a signal is an offset intersection right now, which is a very difficult location to navigate without a signal. And so, that seems like a better place for a signal. It's a more significant roadway. It leads to our softball and soccer complex. So, this seems like a better location. Then if you can show the last one, the intersection of 17th Street is another offset intersection. And it doesn't actually even go to the north. And we wouldn't put a signal there, although we are expecting heavier traffic because that also leads down to the soccer and softball complexes and down to the south bypass route. So, if we could acquire right-of-way in order to build a road that would go over to 19th Street where there already is a signal, this might be a, a better location for that and a safer way to move traffic. But there's so much work that would have to be done to make this happen. It seems like a long shot. It warrants study, though. Councilman Roby?
I agree it warrants study. I agree that that's a tougher one, a lot tougher one. But if you brought a traffic engineer who had never seen that strip of street before, he'd probably throw up when he saw it. Because you've got so many access points there. And there are times when you're gonna go to the soccer field, you'll go nose-to-nose with somebody that wants to turn left into Runnings. So, you're, it's kind of a Mexican standoff right there. But that, I think the study there might not say that's the absolute right solution. But it's gonna tell us something we can do. That, that's kind of a safety concern there. It really is.
Yes, it is. So, is there, anyone opposed to the city moving forward with asking the DOT to do this with us and we'd take on the traffic impact study?
We, we haven't budgeted that, so we'd have to come up with the dollars for that, right?
We'll have to figure it out.
Okay. No, I think it's something that's probably long overdue, is my opinion.
Well, we do, I mean, I do have a budget for engineering services of, I think, $30,000. So, that would be one potential source of funding.
Okay. All right. Well, I can maybe craft a motion to support a recommendation of moving forward with the city completing a traffic impact study for this area. Would anyone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Albertson, second by Danforth.
Are we going to, Mayor, are we gonna put some kind of dollar figure cap on that? So, I mean, otherwise, I'm, I'm gonna guess...
We would bring it back to the council for approval of the contract before...
Okay, right. What I'll do is I'll do an RFP and get some proposals so we know what that is before we commit.
Right. This is an authorization to sign a contract. Really, it would just be to move forward with getting a proposal for contract.
Just point of interest, Shane, you'll bid that up. Is this, would the state bid on that as a, as a potential bidder?
I'm sure they wouldn't. What we'll do is, we'll use people on their list, though, their approved list, so that they don't have any issues with the qualifications of the people that do the study.
They would definitely want to approve who we use. Yes. Councilman Albertson?
I was just going to ask, would the state be in on looking over these RFPs before we accepted it?
Oh, I'm sure they would.
Because we wouldn't really know what we're looking at.
I'm sure they would. Yeah. They'd be a partner in this. They're willing. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number 21 is old business. And there's a couple of old business items. We actually had our charter to Pier with ADI. The, the flight to Pier went off very well. I was on the charter. It was fun. Everyone that came seemed to have a good time. And I don't know if the council's aware of this, but the council acted on approving the payment for the charter at the last council meeting. And the charter was full within one day. So, there, there's definitely a need. A lot of people said they, they would do that again. So, that was a success. It was 50 more boardings. And then, on Sunday, we achieved our 10,000th boarding at the Watertown Regional Airport. So, we made it. We're, we're eligible now for the million dollars that comes with that. And thank you for everybody and for helping and supporting that with...
Is there one?
Yep. Next year, we're gonna hit it in October.
Two charters.
Yeah. Is there any other old business? Councilman Vilhauer?
A couple of work sessions ago, we had a discussion starting Pheasant Lane. And I know it was kind of thrown back into staff's hands to take a look at as far as issues out there, et cetera, anything being done. I've had, I've had a couple inquiries since that time now.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. We are sending out a letter to all the property owners this week, asking them a series of questions. Among them will be, what are your interests in, what do you plan to build? Is it gonna be residential houses? Is it gonna be RG garages? That kind of thing. So, we kind of want to get a feel for what the owners think that they're gonna build. And we're gonna talk about the access and ask them what they feel if they want to participate in and kind of get that feedback in. Then we'll, then we'll start coming forward with the ideas.
Councilman Lalum?
Piggybacking on that, did we go out and place stakes as to where the road would be on that?
We did some basic surveying out there. We went and located all of the pins that exist and marked those. So, we do know what, generally where the right-of-way is out there. We did do some cross-sections, so we kind of have an idea how the lay of the land fits out there. So, if you saw, or if anybody saw activity out there, that's the nature of it. We aren't proposing to do any construction work or of any sort at this point in time.
Councilman Albertson?
Shane, would you be interested in talking about that resolution that's Dan's out there that was brought when it was not city property? Or is that premature to talk about that as a potential of driveways?
I think it's a little premature. I'd like to see what the feedback of the property owners is. But what, what he's referring to is there has been a request by one of the property owners out there to maybe rescind the resolution from the eighties where it restricted the amount of driveways out there and reset that table to some extent. And I think it's a little early to go quite that far yet. But certainly, that'll be one of the options that we will have to realistically discuss if we don't get anywhere with the track that we're trying to achieve.
Right, that's premature. You finish what you're doing. And if there is an overwhelming desire for that R1 single-family neighborhood to convert to a garage district, that changes the scope. So, that would be the time. We need to know that first before we move forward with a resolution. Is there any other old business? New business, there's a couple of things I would like to mention. People may have noticed we're making an attempt to follow a little more strict adherence to Robert's rules in our process where people are granted the floor before they speak so that we don't have people talking over one another. It's hard to hear when two people are talking at the same time. So, bear with us as we get used to doing things differently. Also, it's my intention to reinstate the council committees meeting regularly, the finance committee and the public works committee, which haven't met for quite some time. And these committee meetings would replace the work session. And so, starting at the next council meeting, the first council meeting in January, instead of having a work session, we will have a half-hour finance committee meeting followed by a half-hour approximately public works committee meeting. And the public works committee meeting would just start as soon as the finance committee meeting is over. The difference would be, the council would actually take action at these meetings in the form of a recommendation to the full council. So, there should be more thorough discussion. And half of the council is on the finance committee, the other half is on the public works committee. And whichever committee is meeting, the people that are reviewing those items should know them in depth. And the others are not assigned to those items, so to speak. So, I'm thinking that we'll get a little bit more thorough information happening before the council meeting. And then when we come into the council meeting, action will happen more quickly. So, hopefully, our council meetings won't go into the wee hours of the night. And that will be good for everybody. Also, we'll be having more regular meetings with individual council members and myself to improve communications. So, anybody else have new business? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a reminder, I know a notice has went out, text, email, it was in the paper tonight. For those that have Monday garbage pickup, the next two Mondays, that will now be a Friday pickup. So, I know it always catches some people off-guard. And I think also the policy is that if they still have their green containers out, that can be used for holiday pickup this, this next time around. So, just a reminder for people out there.
It's prior, the Friday prior to the Monday holiday. So, we have two of them in a row. Any other new business? Any liaison member reports? Councilman Roby?
At the CVB Exec Board meeting this morning, we had a presentation that Julie went through with some representatives from the South Dakota Department of Tourism. And they talked a lot about the joint marketing we do with them. CVB's been doing a lot of really neat things with them as well as with Lawrence and Schiller. And the way they're using social media a lot smarter, just making it was, as I say, very data-driven decisions. And I, I think right now, we're seeing some benefits from that because our BBB taxes up and other, everything else looks kind of flat. I asked Julie if she'd be willing to come in and do an abbreviated presentation like that to the council. I think you guys would like to hear that. So, I would throw that out there for a future agenda item.
That's a good idea. Any other? Councilman Lalum?
Yeah, we had our Urban Renewal Board meeting this past, past week that I sat in on. They did get a grant of $2,500 from the community foundation for some flowers. I know they're still short on that. They did do some walking around and talking about potentially having business owners plant flowers. So, they're looking for some direction on that and may look at coming back to the council and see if we can squeeze a couple bucks out for them.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? All right, executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2. We will have an executive session this evening in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters. We do not expect to take action coming out. So, I'd look for a motion, second, and move into executive...
Second.
Moved by Solom, second by Bueller.
Josh.
Josh, why? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We are in executive session.